Welcome everyone to the July 25th City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. We will get started with our agenda, starting with minutes of the meeting from our June meeting. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved to second and in discussion. I see none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. First item will be, we, Roger Lindsay is not with us tonight, so we need to vote for a vice chair.
Nominate.
Of nominations.
Can Peter send the vice chair?
Second.
Peterson's seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this is a moment where if there's an item that is not on tonight's agenda, and you'd like to speak to the planning commission about that item, you have the floor. So anybody that wants to speak again on non-agenda items, please come forward. I've seen none, then we'll move on to the announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to remind all of the planning commission members that there is a training on Wednesday, July 31st, from 9:00 to noon here in the boardroom. Our legal department will be providing that training, and we really hope all of you can be there.
Okay, great. All right, thank you Catherine. All right, this is a point in our agenda where if you have an item that's not on tonight's agenda, and you want to present it to the commission for consideration, we will talk about that. So if anybody has an item not on tonight's agenda, please come forward, and we'll discuss whether we want to hear that or not. All right, I've seen none, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have two agendas, or two consents, and we have initial and secondary. Our initial is, well, they're both for items that we consider non-controversial, that we'll vote as one block of vote. Initial is for items that no one on the commission has conflicts with, and then our secondary will be those of us on the commission who have a conflict, we'll recuse ourselves from that vote. So let me go through the list of what that is to date, and if anyone on staff, commission, or audience wants to pull an item from consent, let me know that. All right, our initial consent is items seven through 10. Item 22 will be added as a deferral to the August meeting. 25, 27, and 28 will be our initial consent agenda. Anyone that wants to pull items off of those, off that agenda. All right, I've seen none, then I will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved to seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have it. All right, I will pass the gavel to Ms. Peterson as our vice chair tonight.
The secondary consent would be items 11, 12, and 26. Is that right? Okay. Is there anyone who wants to have those taken off the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
And second. Okay. All in favor of the secondary consent say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That passes.
All right, thank you. All right, then we will start with item number 13. Excuse me, ordinance 2013-38, an ordinance to rezone .39 acres from Central Commercial CC to residential variety RX for the property located at 1416 Columbia Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, as you indicated, a zoning request to go for CC to RX in support of seven townhouses on the site that is currently occupied by the car wash. Staff has a favorable recommendation to BOMA.
All right, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity for you, if you want to speak for or against this project, to let commissioners know your thoughts, we're going to, in consideration of the entire audience, we're going to manage this to two minutes per comment, or per person. So when you come forward, it'd be helpful to line up, so we can keep things efficient. Please let us know your name, where you live, and give us your two minutes of comments.
My name is Mary Pierce, and I live at 410 Watercrest Drive, and I am the executive director of the Heritage Foundation. I'm on the board of Franklin's Charge, and both organizations are asking that this property not be rezoned. That is the corridor that is really the anchor of our heritage tourism. We believe that putting that type of density on a piece of property along the corridor right now, I think it can have two houses or a commercial shopping center. And our national partners, the Civil War Trust, has also sent you a letter asking that you not do this. We right now are the community on the eve of the Civil War sesquicentennial, who are doing the most effective job at battlefield reclamation in America. And the Civil War Trust has invested well over $2 million to help us buy land. And so to upzone it to more density, I'm told it's not an upzoning, but for our purposes, we believe it is. Right now, every taxpayer of a property in Williamson County, each household, is being subsidized with about $440,000 that they do not pay in property taxes because of heritage tourism. I was here about 20 years ago, when the city made the decision to rezone Winstead Hill to light industrial development. And we got out of that desperate situation by the city and county later buying it for park property, which meant the zoning didn't really matter anymore. But things can happen that have consequences, really big consequences to our community, and I think this is one of those. So thank you, and I ask you to vote against this rezoning.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Skinner. I live at 258 Sontag Drive. I am also third ward alderman that this proposal is located in, and I am also the appointed representative for the Battlefield Commission from the Board of Mayor to Alderman is Alderman. I'd like to ask tonight that you would also reject the rezoning of this property. One of the things that the Battlefield Commission is giving a voice to recommend to the city has to do with, let me read just a little bit. The Battlefield Preservation Commission serves as advisory body to the Board of Mayor to Alderman, city administrators, in the identification, preservation, maintenance, and regulation of sites related to Civil War battles, skirmishes, encampments, troop movements, and other war-related sites located within the city limits of Franklin in order to protect and maintain the city's irreplaceable historic wealth for this and future generations. That's straight out of what the commission is charged to do. I will hope that, and you have before you a letter that was sent from the Battlefield Preservation Commission with the endorsement of all the commissioners also to reject this. This could have great repercussions, not only for just adjacent properties here, but for other acquisition along the corridor. So again, I ask that you would vote no on this rezoning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I've seen none, then we'll close the public comment, and I will entertain a motion, so we can discuss this.
Mr. Chairman, is this the applicant?
Oh, it is, isn't it? Hello. Sorry. Thanks for that reminder. Is there someone representing the applicant?
I'm Debbie Frank, president of Urban Blueprint, a real estate development and land planning consulting firm in Nashville. I'm joined by Daniel Woods, president of the Addison Group, and we are here representing Avenue Point, the proposed residential development at 1416 Columbia Avenue. You will hear from Daniel shortly with specific details about the Avenue Point Town Home Development. I want to take this time to share with you a little bit of how we got here. I'm a real estate developer with city planning and community economic revitalization experience out of Nashville. Daniel and I began exploring areas in middle Tennessee where we could have an impact in small-scale development guided by land use policy plans and development strategies adopted by local governments. As a former city planner in metro Nashville, I personally know taking this approach helps move any development not only forward, but in the right direction, because the local government, along with its team of staff experts, have already done a lot of the heavy lifting. They have held numerous community meetings to educate and gain community support for land use policy plan, which serves as a roadmap for development over the next 10 to 20 years. As in the case of Avenue Point, the proposed residential development is in keeping with the guiding principles of the Franklin Land Use Plan, Central Franklin Character Overlay District Special Area 7, that's a mouthful, as well as the Columbia Avenue Overlay District Commercial Transition. The zone change request from Central Commercial to Residential Variety has received a favorable recommendation to BOMA from the Franklin Planning Staff, as well as the Town Home Development Plan with what we consider to be minor conditions of approval. Columbia Avenue, as you know, is a mixed-use corridor with residential, commercial, civic, and institutional uses. Avenue Point encourages the continuation of infield development, restoration, and preservation of the Columbia Avenue Gateway corridor toward Franklin's downtown core, and the diversification of housing, all within the city's urban growth boundary area, which was established to discourage sprawl patterns of development. It is not located in a historic district. In addition, Avenue Point will function as a buffer between the light industrial uses and the residential, local, commercial, civic, and institutional uses along Columbia Avenue toward the downtown core. We believe this project takes the first step in incorporating the guiding principles of the Central Franklin Character Overlay District, as well as the Columbia Avenue Overlay District beyond Folk Street along Columbia Avenue. I want to conclude my portion of the presentation by just saying we are very excited about this development opportunity, which is very much traditional in character. I have witnessed firsthand how a small-scale development like Avenue Point can begin to jumpstart the pattern of development envisioned by local government in the land use policy plan and/or development strategies. Thank you, and now I'll just turn it over to Daniel, and he'll give you some more specifics about the actual project.
Good evening. My name's Daniel Woods with the Addison Group. I'm partnered with Debbie in Urban Blueprint on this project, and as Debbie said, very excited. More specifically, the property is .39 acres. It's located on Columbia Avenue at the corner of Columbia and Fairground. It is bordered on the north by an animal hospital, bordered to the south by a gas station, bordered to the west by a storage facility, and to the east by a commercial use. And as you go further north, it becomes more residential, and as you go further south, it becomes predominantly light industrial and commercial. And as Debbie said, it is not historically designated, it's not in the historic overlay district. It is in the CFC 07, as well as the CA 03, Columbia Avenue Overlay District, which is named Commercial Transition. So we are following the guidelines of the land use plan to be able to provide something that becomes that transition, and that's why we would, we feel that, that's why planning has given a favorable recommendation. We are proposing seven townhomes that are plus or minus 1,200 square feet, broken into three cottage-style buildings. Originally, we had a plan that we brought to you in the workshop that was more of a brownstone look, and I think some of the feedback we got was that brownstones would be more of an urban setting, and that we'd like to see something that was a little more residential in character. So we adjusted the architecture to do so. The architecture now is three buildings that feel more like single-family homes, less than like multifamily homes. Is there a way that we could go to the DP 5.0 now? Oh, not on the rezone. Oh, so we're just talking about the rezone. Okay. Will we talk in depth about the development plan on the next round? Okay, all right. Then I will skip my development plan, jibber jabber, then. But we are in agreement with the comments and conditions that staff has placed on this project, and I look forward to answering any questions or comments. Thank you very much.
All right. Back in the right train here. Is there a motion before we start discussion?
Move for disapproval.
Okay, move for disapproval. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
I guess I will, since I moved for disapproval. A lot of what I have to say actually pertains to the spatial development of the site, but I don't feel rezoning this in this area is appropriate as to what the intended use is as far as moving into what is the surrounding it and fitting into the existing neighborhood, and I just don't think it's appropriate at this time.
All right. Any other comments?
So, I'd like to ask staff a question, if I might, because we're here infield all the time, this area is just, so if we're looking at this area, where you said we have the residential, single-family, well, actually, single-family, and we have, you know, water's more trary, the animal hospital, this piece of property, then it goes on. So what, in keeping with this, what do you envision, what would be proper? Because on the other side of this, there's a funeral home and animal hospital. Then on this side, there's a gas station. So kind of help me with that, because obviously I'm not really getting this whole transition thing probably in early, I mean, can you help me with that, Catherine, please?
Our land use plan indicates a number of uses that would be proper in this transitional zone, which would include commercial uses, primarily neighborhood commercial uses, as well as attached and detached residential.
All right. Any other comments?
Is it too late to ask a question?
No, please, go ahead, Alma.
On the affordable, is this an affordable housing project? Or is it, is it going to get that price point?
The price point that we're shooting for is in the twos, and that's why there are seven units. There won't be a label or a stigma that says that we're trying to do this through HUD financing. It will not be a subsidy associated about it, but it is a for-market product that is supposed to be within the twos. And our goal is, you know, there's an article that just came out, Franklin homepage, the average home price in Williamson County is $386,000. So our goal, if we can be in the twos and have families living this close to downtown Franklin, we feel like that's a step in the right direction in moderately priced houses.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. What is allowed there now?
It's, commercial is allowed, attached residential is allowed, detached residential is allowed, and I'll defer to Catherine in planning on what is allowed.
And basically, that's what the land use plan said could be done, but this is a commercial district, CC district, so primarily we're looking at neighborhood, retail, and commercial, in terms of the zoning. And there is a small provision for residential, however, it cannot be more than a certain portion of the site. So if this site were to develop without the rezoning to RX, you would only be allowed two units of residential, and the rest would have to be commercial.
The density is six units per acre that's allowed.
So have you had a chance to, and I'm sure you have, speak with Heritage Foundation in the battlefield?
We have. I think, I'm fairly sure it's public knowledge, but yes, we've met with them, we've met with Paul Gaddis, Eric Jacobson, and Heritage Foundation, and actually stopped our process earlier this year to offer it to sale for them, since it is not historically designated. Yes, yes, we absolutely did.
Jimmy, I appreciate that question, but I think it's probably not, to a certain degree, not relevant for the conversation we're having now, so let's keep it to just the issue of zoning. All right, any other comments?
I would just say, I'm a stark supporter of affordable housing, but I'd just like to say, at this particular location, I just cannot support, because the laws to historic preservation would be too great. Even though there's nothing that the Historic Preservation Division has planned or anything, I just feel it is time to have some affordable units there. Seven units at that price point, even though we're needing some, I just don't think it would be feasible.
All right, any other comments?
Well, y'all already know I don't like this much density, so you'll know why I voted the way I did. Too small, too much.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman, on density?
No, apparently not. I'm sorry.
Let's just say I've tried to get out of this little, turning onto Columbia Avenue, because I live on that side of town, and it's, I tell you, eh, no, I'll leave it right there.
All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion to disapprove, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, so should we consider item 14?
We will need to do that, because they will both have to go onto BOMA.
Okay. Then item 14 is Resolution 2013-41, a resolution approving a development plan for Avenue Point PUD subdivision located at 1416 Columbia Avenue.
And Mr. Chairman, I will say we have received a number of letters from across the country regarding this development plan.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this specific item? All right, I've seen none, then someone representing the applicant? Nope? No? Okay, all right. Daniel, you're up again.
Well, obviously, it's, if the rezoning is recommended for disapproval, it changes this, but our plan is seven units of residential. I think that the scale of what we're trying to do is the same as what the zoning allows, which would be a two-story building that could be mixed use with residential above. So the, our proposal is seven units. We meet all of the city requirements as it stands right now, which is, indicates the favorable recommendation from staff. We have not asked for any exceptions on this project. The density is higher because of the size of the units, and that's how we're able to keep prices competitive. And to Alma's point, as much as I would love for these to be affordable, the math doesn't work out in that respect. So I'm very proud that we would be able to deliver something in the twos, and closer to a workforce housing component in this respect. But the, that's how, that's how density makes projects more affordable. So the 1,200 square foot allows us to deliver units that are more in a competitive price point, where what would be allowed by code would be a more expensive project, and that's kind of what we're facing today in Franklin. So with that, I will answer any questions or comments.
All right, thank you. Or is there a motion?
Move for disapproval.
Second.
Moved and seconded for disapproval. Any comments? All right, seeing none on favor of disapproval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, item 16.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry, jumped ahead. Ordinance 2013-37, an ordinance to rezone .29 acres from historic core residential R6 to residential variety RX for the property located at 411 Cummings Street.
Mr. Chairman, again, this is a rezoning of, this is in, this is contiguous to our historic, to historic property. It is not in the historic district. We are looking at, again, three units on .29 acres, and staff is recommending your favorable recommendation to BOMA.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience who just wants to speak to this particular item, please come forward. All right, I've seen none, then is there someone representing the app? Oh, you want to speak to the project?
Margie Tyree, 2211 Oak Branch Circle, Franklin, Tennessee, and I own the property at 417 Cummings, which would be right next door to this property. And I don't have a problem with two houses on Cummings, but I have a problem with three houses, because there's going to, only going to be one way in and one way out, and if you have three houses, let's say, everybody's got two cars, I believe that'll be 10 cars going in and out of there, and then they have company, where's all the cars going to park? There's not enough room. And if you put up what your plan for what the houses look like, I have a picture over there, I think you've got it. Anyway, the picture looks really good, but just remember, take in mind, that those houses are only going to be 22.4 inches wide, and they're going to be five feet apart. So, I mean, it looks on the picture like, you know, like there's a big separation there. You can reach out and touch the other guy's house, for one thing, but, like, once again, where's everybody going to park? There's no parking on the street. If you, you've got two nice houses over on Evans that they're going to build. Two really nice houses on Cummings, that's four houses, would be fine. It'd look good, it wouldn't make the neighborhood decrease in value, it would actually make the neighborhood maybe even a little bit more in value. It'd just be a better, better idea than cramming. You're cramming in as much as you can, and people won't have room to move around. And once again, just remember, there's only one way in and one way out. So I think if you take those kind of things in consideration of how they're going to drive in and out of there and park, and where's their company parking, four houses would be even, that's even kind of cramming it, but it'll work with four. Three, and they're real small, I don't think so, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
My name is Beverly Carter, this is my husband, Michael Carter. We stay at Evans Street, 910 Evans Street. When we was approached with this, my husband was approached first, and it was told it was going to be maybe three houses put on this property, but now they want to put five. We signed a paper saying that they can use access to our driveway, that none of our land will be taken. I have been told that our fence will have to be moved over. If our fence has to be moved over, they'd be taking some of our property, which that was not agreeable at the time. And I don't see how five houses or six houses is going to work on this lane, and to have access back and forth out of the driveway, because he says eight feet or seven feet of that, it was, used to be an alley down through there, and And Margie Tyree is trying to approach us, because cars was coming down through the alley, stopping in the middle of the night and stuff, so we asked, could we block it off? He told us, yeah. He said, half of that driveway is his, and half of it is ours. But he want to come seven feet or eight feet over on our property, and he said our fence would have to be moved over. Well, if he come over, over, he's coming over on our property. And it was agreement at the time when he talked to my husband, that none of our land would be touched. So that's all we want, we have problems of it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I see none, and is there someone representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, before the applicant speaks, I need to accuse myself of this item and the next one due to professional.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Good evening. I'm Doug Sharp with Gresham Smith and Partners, representing Regent Homes in this particular item, and the next one as well. First of all, the, I guess, the formalities, we are in agreement with the staff conditions, and are requesting your positive recommendation to BOMA on this item and the next. The, I think, a couple of housekeeping things, real quick, and then I'd like to show you some of the context images that give you an idea of what we're dealing with here. First of all, the, there are two homes on Evans that are not part of this, they are part of the same developer's overall project. They are not under consideration and not part of the development plan or the, or the related zone change. The, the alley or private drive, shared drive, that's been already referred to, is within an easement that has already been granted. The city's reviewing the construction documents for it, and it's already going to be built as part of the access to the two homes on Evans. So it, it is, in effect, already pre-existing, and will, the question is how many homes, whether it's one, which could be built now, on the Cummings Street parcel, or three as being proposed, will be able to access this common driveway. The other thing that I want to make a point of is, with the proposed RX zoning, two things. As Alderman Peterson is very much aware, there's a whole gamut of things that could be put into RX zoning, and a development plan is a pretty good mechanism to be a safeguard against the gamut of other things, other than single-family, as proposed in this case, that can go in, in this district, should it be approved. But it's not ironclad. And to make it ironclad, the developer is perfectly willing and plans to de-restrict these three single-family lots to single-family use, to take any consideration, near-term or long-term, for any redevelopment that would not be single-family. Also, it's kind of interesting that even to, oh, well, first of all, the, the original, before, not too long ago, there were two duplexes on this property, therefore, four homes in two separate buildings. And currently, to even subdivide this one fairly large tract that you see here, relative to its surroundings, to subdivide it into two lots, it still takes the RX zoning, and therefore, the request for this rezoning. So when we get to the development plan, we can certainly discuss the merits of the number of lots, but to subdivide this lot at all, the zone change is requested and needed in order to do as such. Micah, if you're able to reference the PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to very quickly just roll through some context slides that are part of this Franklin Small Area Plan. And I'm not sure which slide is on the wall is best to represent, but the point is that single-family use on this side of Cummings Street is referenced in the smaller, in the, in the downtown Franklin Plan. And on the opposite side of the street is the Columbia Avenue overlay, and it, because of its limited depth to, to Columbia Avenue, one thing that's, there's a lot of redevelopment going to occur in this corridor, no doubt, over time. Most of the property across the street right now is vacant. But one thing that won't be occurring, a safe bet, is that there will not be more single-family on the opposite side. It will be some more intense use, or perhaps even parking lot, which is what's represented on the images that are part of the, the corridor. These images are of, now you're looking at the adjacent homes on the street, they are all one-story or one-and-a-half-story cottages. So what we are proposing is in keeping, in terms of the size of these homes, and the character as well. We received some very good input from the Historic Zoning Commission, as well as from neighbors at the neighborhood meeting, relative to the massing and character of these buildings. They are not high-style relative to their character, they're not two-story. And we're very context conscious here, relative to the big picture, as well as to the meeting, immediate surrounding conditions. The other slides in this series are of Columbia Avenue, to give you an idea of the nature of that corridor as well. Be glad to entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question. She brought up a valid point. It's a large lot, and even to staff true, that even to subdivide this into two lots would require this rezoning, is that so?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Our vote on the rezoning is not at all tied with what they plan, right? There's two totally separate, correct? Okay. Because that's where I would have a question for it.
All right, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like them to be sympathetic to the Carters, obviously, about the easement. I think it's important to respect their wishes on, on what they were told many years ago, obviously, there. If there's a way for two units to be built there versus three, I think that'd be less traffic, and it'd be in goodwill to respect the Carters.
Okay, any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the rezoning to RX, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Whoever opposes, please raise your hand. One way or the other, if you have two votes. Start that over. Yeah. Those who are in approval, in, in agreement with the motion, say aye, or raise your hand, please.
To approve rezoning.
To approve the rezoning.
To approve the rezoning, so we have two to prove, and I'm assuming the balance is against, or if you raise your hand to say you're against. Okay, so motion fails. All right. Then we will move to item number seventeen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I need to start over. Let's, let's just start the agenda over.
Mr. Chairman, can, can we ask the city attorney, do they need to vote for a motion to, for unfavorable recommendations? If they vote it down?
Well, I think that the board of Mayor Alderman, should they decide to approve it, I think this board needs to decide, based on its expertise, whether or not the development plan would be proper, assuming it would be passed. Is that what you're asking?
No, the actual recommendation from this board, it just.
Recommendation was to approve.
It doesn't have a recommendation right now.
I think, I, it's not a final vote, like a, like a plat is, so I think it's fine to take it with a vote of two to four.
Against.
Yeah. Motion failed.
Correct. Okay. All right, so item number sixteen. Resolution, Resolution 2013-42, a resolution approving a development plan for the cottages on Cummings Street, located at 411 Cummings Street. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, everyone should have a revised staff report, this was revised a few days ago. Staff recommends that you send the slide on, on to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone in the audience wants to speak to the development plan that's being proposed? Okay, is there anyone representing the applicant that wants to speak to this development plan?
Again, we are asking that you forward a favorable recommendation on this development plan, either in, as presented, or with your recommendations to make modifications to BOMA. Certainly, our hope, and I think the likelihood, is that BOMA, when they address this issue, will give it good consideration relative to the zone change, recognizing that the lot that exists is every bit as large, almost, as the adjacent two lots, and that to even subdivide it into two lots requires this zone change. And unfortunately, for better or for worse, I know RX is kind of a snake-bit kind of zoning district that draws a lot of, a lot of lightning rods, but it's the only zoning district within the code that facilitates dividing this one lot into even two single-family lots. So with that, again, we are open to your feedback. The three homes are proposed on this because they are rear-loaded, they gain their access from the common driveway, which is a positive for the street, recognizing that the street then becomes available, not encumbered by dry, by driveways. It's respectful to the historic eligible property next door not having driveways as well. And the scale of this, again, the homes are very similar in overall square footage, one-and-a-half story, massing, et cetera, to the adjacent properties. And in consideration of what's adjacent here, either across the street or adjoining properties, if you really examine the context, I think you'll gain a level of comfort with the proposal that we've made here. And would certainly entertain any questions that you have. I think Adam Balas would like to make some comments relative to some of the easement considerations.
Yeah, my name's Adam Balas, I'm a minority partner in the ownership group of the parcel that will be developing the land. And Micah, if, if, I don't know if you can switch through some of these, but if you could refer back to the, the land use, or the Small Area Plan, like the aerial image, and it's, it's very hard to tell on this property, but I wanted to make two points with regard to, to this proposed plan. The first being that the single parcel that we are asking to be rezoned lines up exactly with the three units that are proposed per the City of Franklin Downtown Small Area Plan, in particular, the Columbia Avenue corridor. So if you look at the parcel that is proposed here, and, and, there's basically the existing Carter property, which is a historic property to our north, and then there are three homes proposed on this downtown small area plan, that matches verbatim what we were proposing to do with this rezoning and this development plan. If you look at the context of the homes that currently sit on Cummings, all of them are non-conforming, based on their density and their size, to the R6 zoning that is currently in place, thereby necessitating a rezon to RX to even repeat what's already on the street. So as Doug mentioned, even though RX is kind of snake-bit for various reasons, you could not repeat the homes that are there today with any of the current zoning except for RX, hence the request to do that. And furthermore, it's, it's, like I said, basically verbatim out of the land use plan in what we are, are asking for your support on. With regard to the easement conversation that the Carters brought up earlier today, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. The easement that we are proposing matches the old alleyway width that was previously abandoned that we would be bringing back. The fence that is there currently would have to move over slightly, but the fence that's there currently encroaches on what was the old alley. So nothing has changed from the easement that we presented to them, the site plan that we presented to them, and those dimensions, so we're not going back to them at this later date, asking for a movement of a fence. I think, in addition to that, if you look at the easement that's actually recorded that they executed, there is a document in that exhibit that shows three homes on this Cummings side of the street. So this is not a new site plan or new image that's being presented to them for the first time, it was part of the package that they executed and agreed to in order to facilitate this, this plan at the time. So with that, if there's any questions, be happy to help Doug answer.
All right, any other comments?
Yes, if I, if I may, there's, one of the less, one of the points that was garnered from staff, as well as neighborhood, was the sensitivity of this watershed. It's an extremely sensitive area that has flooding issues. We were made aware from the onset that we were going to have to exceed the, the normal standards, and in essence, have a net zero runoff compared to its existing greenfield condition to, as opposed to post-development. To accommodate that, we've taken, again, final plans through city staff in order to accommodate not only the runoff and storm drainage, water quality issues from the two homes already platted and being permitted on Evans, but to also anticipate the needs for that of these three homes on Cummings. It has to be done in an aggregate, combined fashion. Underneath the proposed alley, the common driveway, there's, the, first of all, the pavers will be pervious, such that the stormwater will infiltrate through the paving itself, and be a cobbled look that will be very aesthetically pleasing as well. And below that will be two to three feet of aggregate stone that will allow for storage of stormwater in the voids, but that alone doesn't accomplish the, the needs and the requirements for detaining water on site. There also will be vaults, voids, pipes used to create larger storage areas underneath the common driveway as well, to support the stormwater. Staff is already reviewing this, they've had the, the plans in hand for most of the current cycle, and is in the process of being approved for construction relative to access to the homes on Evans. So I wanted to make that point, because this is a very sustainable-oriented kind of project that involves the Cummings Street proposal before you tonight, but it definitely is all intertwined and interrelated as a common development from a stormwater management perspective. And we want to be sure and make the point that we have addressed that not only in kind, but very proactively.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
No, he said, can we ask him questions?
Let's get a motion first, and then we can do that.
Can I, can I say something?
No, ma'am. No, at this point, it's.
Just ask me.
Close comment. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, is there a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second, is there a motion?
Chairman, I, I just have some questions before I can decide on a motion.
Well, may I ask the attorney, can we have a comment without a motion?
No, you have to have a motion to let the board know that you want to discuss it. I mean, the person who makes the motion has to support what they think, but the person who makes the second doesn't have to. The purpose of the second is simply to say, let's discuss it. So we have a motion on the table.
I'd like a second.
Okay, so your motion, your second. Okay, now discussion.
I had a couple of questions. My second one is, is what you just talked about, though, so I, I did have questions about the stormwater, and from what I understand, you're connecting this with the stormwater for the two lots that are, that will go on Evans, right?
That's correct, yes.
Because it looked as if the, the water normally from this would just flow across, across that lot, too.
Right, the roof runoff from the proposed homes on. Right, the roof runoff from the proposed homes on Cummins Street will be channeled to the underground storage below the common driveway. And the outfall to that, which is very restricted and controlled, which is why we have so much storage on site, goes to the storm drainage that is existing on Evans Street.
One thing, just to clarify that, Ms. Peterson, is that the, if you recall back, it's been several months ago, but there was a plat that was previously approved by this body to create three parcels. Included in that plat was this access drive, so that's why the construction plans are now being reviewed by city staff, unconnected to somewhat from this rezoning request of the Cummins Street parcel.
The other part that I wanted to ask about was the, I guess, the auto turn exhibit, about how one gets in and out of the three pieces, three residences. I guess I could see how it works for number three and number two. Number one looks as if though it could not be accomplished on the site or in the access.
Ms. Peterson, that was an issue that staff brought to our attention as well, and originally their recommendation was for deferral based on this one issue. We dealt with this in a positive way by adding the area that is the, shows up as the crosshatch dark area, which is supplemental impervious paving that facilitates a one-point turn out of that garage. So we certainly will need to address this in greater detail at site plan level. Again, this is a development plan. And, but we have satisfied to staff's satisfaction at this level their concerns. And by adding greater width, drivable width, to the paved surface of the 16-foot wide driveway, we're able to accomplish that. And at the same time also, with the driveways to the garages being relatively short, they aren't parking pads, that they then allow for that swing of the vehicle as well. And we anticipate having an access easement to extend wide enough to facilitate that as well. Details to be still worked out at site plan level though.
I appreciate you telling me about the excess pavement there. I also was looking at just the backing there, it looks like it hits the, the lot two. If you look, it shows the backing movement, kind of hitting, kind of going over into lot two, but maybe that's, maybe that's not the case. But I do, I do think that it did help to put the extra pavement there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Which brings, one of my main concerns, and was brought up by Ms. Tyree, was also that, you know, the single drive with the three, you know, the one-way in, the one-way out with the three. You'd said earlier, it seems to me that three on this lot is going to be, three units on this lot is going to be very tight as far as, and I understand now, I'm glad you pointed out about the extra pavement because I was wondering how in the world they're going to get in and out. My gut feeling for this, and part of the reason that I didn't want to just rubber stamp the rezoning, is that, that this is better served for two units. It seems, it just, even in your description there, you still have some things even that you guys haven't worked out yet yourself, because this is going to be a difficult fit in my opinion, for people to live here, right? It looks good on, for people to actually come in, come out, have guests, and live here. I think it's better suited to two. And opening up the, opening up the door, you've already alluded to that, kind of opens up the door to a whole lot of other things. And if, at all, if I were ever to support anything like this, there would have to be that, you know, there would have to be something in writing that said, this is what we're going to do, and nothing else. And, but the three just seems to me like there's, it's going to be tight, it's going to be pretty tight to me. It's going to be pretty hard for folks to, who live actively, to get in and out of here. So the three just looks a little claustrophobic to me, so that's why I wasn't at all excited about this plan.
Appreciate the comments. Just for clarification, the driveway, the shared driveway is 16 feet in width, which is the same standard as, in width standard, as city alleys. And I know from personal experience, they are wide enough to pass two cars. And so it's a matter of widening an existing one-way gravel driveway to accommodate, if need be, slowly, two cars at a time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Can two of the units be served off the alley and one be served off Cummins?
No, sir.
Is there a reason you can't have Cummins driveway?
Mr. Franks, with the site plan that we have proposed, there's not adequate width for a front-load house on Cummins. I think we were trying to be mindful of the streetscape along Cummins, and once again, I know Ms. Allen's comments about things being tight and whatnot, we were trying to mimic the sizing of the homes and the, what's there adjacent now. Doug mentioned earlier the fact that there were previously two duplexes on this lot that were torn down, so a total of four units. There's a duplex immediately to our south currently on site. So it's very much in keeping with the density that's there. The, once again, the alleyway, the dimensions of the homes off that alleyway, even though we're calling this a private drive, we're meeting city design standards for both the alleyway and the setbacks of the homes off that. So those setbacks are the same of what you would see in, for instance, West Haven, at either five feet or greater than 22 feet. So there's no difference in what we're proposing compared to those very successful kind of established communities that are built to city standards.
All right, any other comments?
So there'll just be one access off of Evans for all of these lots?
Yes, ma'am, and that is what was approved with the plat, was a shared access point there to treat it more like, continue to use the term alley, but to treat it as if it were an alley and a newer development, but obviously it's a private driveway.
All right, any other comments? So now the vote is for a favorable recommendation to BOMA, as the motion stands.
For the three lots, right?
For the three lots proposed, that's correct. All right, all in favor of a favorable recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that's in line with the previous vote. Okay, motion fails.
We thank you.
All right, item 17, ordinance 2013-36, ordinance to rezone 3.75 acres from medium residential R2 to residential variety RX for the properties located at 121 and 123 Ralston Lane.
Mr. Chairman, this is a rezoning to RX as you'd indicated before. It would be in support of 14 multifamily units on this site. And staff recommends your recommendation for approval to BOMA.
Multifamily, is that what you said?
No. Single family.
Single family.
Single family, okay.
Single family, I'm sorry. Detached, not attached.
Got you. Multiple families. Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience wants to speak to this item other than the applicant? All right, I see none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hello, my name's Tim Thompson, this is my wife Jennifer. We purchased a piece of property there on Ralston Lane, I guess a couple of months ago, and I'm a local business owner here in Franklin and also own a farm here in Franklin. Actually, I think my wife's family has been here since the 1700s, and I've been here a very, very long time myself. And we purchased this property and we wanted to do something, I think, to serve Franklin well and have it a little bit larger lot compared to what's been being built, being a local realtor here in town. I'd like to see something done nice. So I brought along two members of my team that are also live here in Williamson County, and that's Alex Marks and Tyler Ring. What we have proposed to do is single-family homes with, is it detached? Yeah, single detached homes and with one street with a cul-de-sac. And we've had multiple meetings with the neighbors and also with staff, and we tried to incorporate everything that they have asked us to adjust in our plans. I think we started off with 16 lots and we're now, we're now at 14, and we think we are doing everything they've asked us to do. And our team is in agreement with all of the staff's comments, and we request a positive recommendation from the Board of Mayor and Aldermen's. And also, I'd like to introduce Brian Gallagher from Edge to go over the project's highlights, if I could at this time.
Hello, I'm Brian Gallagher, I'm with Edge, we're the applicant and the land planner. In regards to the rezoning, just wanted to echo what Tim said, and I will leave my comments to the next item, which is the development plan.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, item 18, resolution 2013-46, resolution approving a development plan for Ralston Road, PUD subdivision located at 121 and 123 Ralston Lane.
Mr. Chairman, this development plan proposes an infill subdivision with 14 single-family residential units with one open space lot around the border of the subdivision. The applicant is requesting one modification of standards with this development plan. The modification of standards is requested to permit garage doors exceeding nine feet in width on side and rear-loaded garages. Staff recommends approval of the modification with the condition that the modification of standards only apply to garage doors that are not street-facing. That's condition number five on the staff report, and staff recommends approval of this development plan.
All right, is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant that wants to speak to this item? All right, I see none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Again, I'm Brian Gallagher with Edge, and just a couple of real brief comments to point out some changes that, since the last time you all saw the plan at workshop. Since workshop, we went ahead and reduced it from 15 lots down to one more less, which is 14 lots. We have also, on our northern boundary and western boundary, incorporated more open space in between the lots and the boundary. Both the northern and southern boundaries now have at least 20 feet of perimeter landscape buffering, which will include a solid wood fence. And on the western boundary, we've dropped the property lines, the homes back 44 feet to provide enough open space to save the existing trees and protect the boundary to our west. Other than that, if you all have some questions, I'd be here to answer them as well as everyone else on our consulting team.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I went to the, one of the neighborhood meetings, and there was, I think we can say, interest from the people around it, and it was a fair turnout, so I felt good about that.
Good. All right, any other discussion?
We got to do the MOS.
I'm sorry?
You got to do the MOS before you take a vote.
Oh, thank you very much. Let's address the modification standard request. This has to do with the garage doors. Your staff talking about it, so at least it's not fences, Marsha.
Oh, yeah.
All right, can I get an amendment to the main motion relative to this first modification, or the only modification standard requested?
Was that the main or the second?
I'm sorry?
Do you need amendment for the modification or amendment to?
I need amendment to the modification.
Does the applicant approval to? Does applicant objecting to?
The applicant is requesting this modification.
Which would mean more than single, you know, wider than a single door on the sides and the rear. It's kind of like we're going to be talking about it in our.
Move for approval.
Okay, move for approval.
For the modification standards as written by staff.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion for the amendment to the main motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Back to the main motion, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number 19, ordinance 2013-35, an ordinance to rezone 195.5 acres from agricultural to residential variety for the property located at 4413 South Caruthers Road.
Mr. Chairman, this is again a rezoning, as you mentioned, this is in support of 213 single-family and 123 townhomes on this site, and staff would recommend your favorable recommendation to BOMA.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant that wants to speak to this item? Starting to thin out out there. All right, I see none, and there's someone representing the applicant.
Hello, my name is Greg Gaimball, here representing Goodall Homes. Waters Edge is a 195.5 acre piece of property. It is one of the, I consider it a quadrant, I guess, at old, old South Caruthers Road is what's being considered now. Property to the north of Waters Edge is Nichols Bend, PUD now called Lockwood Glen. To the east of that is Simmons Ridge, and to the east of Waters Edge is the Helm property. The two properties to the north are currently zoned RX, believe that the Helm property also has attached residential, including, there's a small triangular piece located just south of, South Caruthers Road here, that is also RX zone, which is what we are requesting for Waters Edge. The reason why we're requesting RX for Waters Edge is that we're proposing a mix of two product types, single-family homes on 60-foot wide lots. These homes would range from 2,400 to 4,000 square feet in size. Those are predominantly two-stories, two-story homes, but there will be some one-story options included. The attached product is a one-story attached villa, predominantly marketed to active adults. And happy to say I found out that yesterday, South Caruthers Road started construction with installation of erosion controls. With that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion for this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 20, resolution 2013-47, a resolution approving a development plan for Waters Edge, PUD subdivision located at 4413 South Caruthers Road. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this development plan is proposed for 213 single-family units and 123 attached townhome units, as previously stated. The Harpeth River borders the site on the west and south. Significant portion of the proposed development lies within existing floodplain, which the applicant proposes to alter with cut and fill. Since much of the site is proposed for floodplain alteration, the applicant has included a floodplain alterations and enhancements document that provides justification for the extent of the floodplain alteration. Planning Commission and BOMA should carefully consider the impact of this development within the existing floodplain. The land use plan states that the protection of sensitive environmental features is an important community value. Of particular importance are the Harpeth River corridor and its tributaries, the related floodplain areas, hillsides, hilltops, and established tree stands. The zoning ordinance also states that one of the purposes of the proposed RX zoning district is to protect environmentally sensitive areas such as floodplains and steep slopes. According to the zoning ordinance, encroachments in the FFO district that would impede the holding capacity of the floodplain should be strictly limited. However, the zoning ordinance does go on to state that a permitted encroachment into the FFO the FFO district is floodplain alteration conducted in accordance with the city's stormwater management ordinance. This project does fall under that permitted encroachment, but as part of the approval of the project, the planning commission and BOMA should carefully consider the environmental impact of this development, since it is directly adjacent to the Harpeth River. As mentioned earlier, the applicant has included a supplement to their submittal to address the proposed floodplain alteration. In the supplement, they say the goals of the plan are to increase floodplain storage, to improve water quality from the property as it discharges to the Harpeth River, and to utilize green infrastructure. It is through the floodplain alteration and enhancements plan that the applicant intends to satisfy the policy statements of the land use plan and the purpose statements of the zoning ordinance. Additionally, the applicant is requesting one modification of standards to permit garage doors exceeding nine feet in width on rear-loaded garages access from an alley. Staff recommends approval of the modification of standards and approval of the overall development plan.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience other than the applicant want to speak to this? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hi again, my name is Greg Gamble, uh, representing Goodall Homes. We recognize that Waters Edge is a very unique property, uh, and, uh, it's bound on two sides by the Harpeth River. Uh, we want to talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. I want to tell you a little bit of some of the features of our, our development plan. Uh, to the north of the, uh, I'm sorry, to the, um, uh, north of the property, uh, will be located Franklin's new city park. Connecting to the city park will be approximately two miles of Greenway Trail built by Goodall Homes on Waters Edge. This, uh, Greenway Trail will traverse the entire length of the property around, uh, along the banks of the Harpeth River. A portion of this is a part of our Parkland dedication requirement, uh, but of that two-mile area, a little less than half of that satisfies that Parkland dedication requirement. In addition to the, uh, the, uh, Greenway Trail, uh, we will have a, um, a fitness club and a canoe launch, so, uh, we're waging, uh, we'll have some of the healthiest residents of Franklin. At least they won't have any excuses. Now that the dam's gone, we'll be able to canoe from Waters Edge over to Riser Point, which would be great as well. We recognize that the Harpeth River is one of Franklin's most valued resources. There are three items that we want to focus on with, uh, with y'all this evening. Um, one, that we'll be increasing the available floodplain storage that's currently on the property, uh, by, uh, by twenty percent. Uh, we will be improving water quality, uh, from the property into the Harpeth River. Uh, and we will be implementing the most current practices of green infrastructure. Tonight at workshop, we, uh, there was a discussion regarding infiltration of stormwater. Well, that's not a requirement yet, but we will be infiltrating the first one inch of rainfall on this property. Um, there are a couple of things I do want to talk about, uh, before we talk about the, these, uh, individual bullet points, and one is the modification of standards request. Um, I think it was last month, uh, was a discussion regarding, uh, Lad Park and a similar issue. Uh, I went ahead and typed up a little bit of revised language for that modification of standards that would be more consistent with what, with what's been approved on other developments, and, uh, that language is, uh, "All alley-accessed garages shall have a maximum width of eighteen feet." And, so I wanted to pass this to the planning commission if, uh, before discussion. In either case, the modification of standards request that's currently worded, uh, or with the revised language is satisfactory for, uh, for our development plans. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Tom Allen, uh, to discuss, uh, the stormwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, uh, my name is Tom Allen. I'm a water resources engineer with Neil Schaefer, and I'm representing Goodall Homes this evening, and I thought it was very timely that you had a workshop earlier talking about green infrastructure, and I said, "Boy, this is really great timing." Um, I thought the EPA video on green infrastructure was excellent, um, and that's the approach we're going to take with this project. We're going to work very closely with the city staff to incorporate the, uh, green infrastructure BMPs, and we will infiltrate or retain on site the first inch of, uh, precipitation and runoff. Uh, as Greg mentioned, we are going to increase the floodplain storage, and we're going to do that by providing approximately forty thousand cubic yards of excavation within the floodplain, and that's equivalent to about seven million gallons of water that can be stored. We are reducing the floodplain area with fill to elevate the homes to make sure we're at least a minimum of three feet above the hundred-year flood event. So, in order to pick up the additional storage, um, if you have your, I don't know if you have your stormwater management plan in front of you, but on page five is a typical floodplain cross-section, and if you get, once we get outside of the sixty-foot buffer, we'll get our additional storage by excavating within the hundred-year floodplain footprint, the additional forty thousand cubic yards of storage. Also, as Greg mentioned, our second goal is improved water quality from the site. Implementing the green infrastructure will improve the water quality by infiltration, ebb-able transpiration, the things that you heard in the workshop this evening. And in addition to that, we'll be incorporating stormwater quality BMP treatment trains. Eighty percent of the proposed development will receive tertiary treatment, so it'll go through at least three water quality treatment BMPs. The green infrastructure, as you heard earlier this evening, that will improve water quality. It reduces flows and stormwater volumes downstream, and as you heard, uh, as well, that the approach we're going to take was the approach discussed in the video and also what Crystal discussed. We're going to slow the stormwater runoff down, we're going to spread it out, and we're going to infiltrate it into the ground. And, you know, all of these, in addition to the water quality treatment trains, will improve water quality to the Harpeth. We're going to use, as, uh, Crystal mentioned, uh, the city will probably adopt Metro's post-development or low-impact development, uh, green infrastructure management manual. Those are the approaches we're going to take for the green infrastructure. Our approaches will be suitable for the site, taking into account the soils as well as, uh, the design rainfall events. We're looking forward to being one of the first developments to incorporate the green infrastructure practices, and our goal is for the city to use this project as a demonstration project, to take other potential developers and their engineers down and see what we mean by incorporating green infrastructure.
Uh, one last small piece. Uh, this was brought to our attention, uh, really kind of after we had been through this design process, um, but I, I wanted to share it with you. This is from, uh, our current stormwater zoning ordinance, and, and, and that will be easier than the last time I did. I've highlighted here, uh, the section of the ordinance that addresses floodplain alterations. And, the first part discusses the requirement of matching one-to-one, uh, that floodplain alteration. If you look at Z, it says, "The city may imply, apply incentives for floodplain management strategies applied beyond those required by this ordinance." Uh, we are meeting each one of these, uh, and, uh, so it was, it was fascinating to, when this was pointed out to us, that, uh, we were meeting each one of these, uh, uh, kind of goals for incentives, um, and yet we're not asking for the incentives. Uh, the modification, those incentives could include modification of density trees, uh, other development requirements acceptable to the city engineer and planning department. Um, but, um, just wanted to bring that to your attention, as well as, uh, wanted to make sure that you had this, uh, information. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for this project, so we can start discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All right, any discussion?
Greg, I'm, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, thanks. Greg, um, that Harper River is very important to, uh, the citizens of this town, and I live on the Harper River, and I take a lot of pride in that river. The top of the bank is very important. The row of houses that you have facing that river currently, you're really close, and in your study here, it shows sixty foot when I thought it was a hundred foot, according to the diagram, so I want to be sure that you comply with the sixty-foot top of bank and, as well, and, uh, particularly that line of homes. I'm not, you know, I, I don't have a problem with your mitigating the cut and fill of the, of the floodplain, but I do, I am sensitive to right against that Harpeth River. I think that's like Columbia Avenue against, the homes up against Columbia Avenue. So, I want you, you got to be, you may, and I hope staff will, um, work with you and, and caution you and, and be, and observe the watershed through there and allow, you know, I'm sure the stormwater and the drains will be directed to the north or south to the large areas and that, solve that problem, but I just think it's important, you get into grading, and, uh, you know, I know you got to leave room for your trail coming around, but, uh, that's my concern with the project. Uh, I am in favor of it, but I do want you to, if the lots have to be a little shorter, I'm sure we'd like staff not to consider that a major change in the development plan, but it may require moving some of the lots around, uh, but I'm just, you're really encroaching, you're tight right there on that one stretch.
But, and I'm happy to talk about that. The, um, the ordinance requires a sixty-foot buffer from the top of bank. Uh, the bank of the Harpeth River, uh, in this particular instance, is measured from the other side of the river. It's a little bit lower on the other side, so we have a higher bluff on portions of the Waters Edge side of the river. Uh, where that sixty-foot buffer has slopes greater than twenty percent, the buffer then goes to a hundred feet. Uh, we are, we have a requirement to have a Greenway Trail that runs alongside, uh, of this buffer, but not in the buffer. And, so we have an additional fifteen feet, so our lots currently, the back of lots, Micah, if you can go up to the next slide. Within this area of steep slope, I don't know how we, try to see that, you see the gray area over on the left side, um, yeah, Micah's putting his hand on it. In that particular location, we are, we are between a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five feet from the top of bank of the river, and Micah, if you'll go down to the next slide down. In this particular location, the slopes start to recite a little bit, and, uh, behind, uh, these lots here, uh, we do go down to seventy-five feet, but again, we still have to keep room for that Greenway Trail.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Peterson? You had a question?
Oh, uh, yes. Uh, on, on the floodplain, page four, uh, it says there will, uh, you know, placement of fill will be required within the existing floodplain to ensure residential areas will not be flooded during a one-hundred-year flood, and the part that I wanted to ask about, there will be on, there will only be one small area with moderate or deep fill. Does that mean that most of the fill will be very minor, or does that mean that there's only one small area of fill?
I'm happy to talk about that, that, uh, question. Micah, if you could go to our construction plan. Actually, you know what? This will be fine from here. Uh, scroll up just a little bit higher, please, up to the intersection. When South Caruthers Road was planned, the intersection here at the New Connect, New Connector Road and South Caruthers Parkway, uh, was designed at eight feet above the floodplain. Uh, we have to connect to that point, and so we do have some areas on this plan that are, uh, eight to ten feet of fill in order to make sure that we, we can meet the road alignments.
Well, I, I wondered about that part because that, that appears to be where you're, where the floodplain, where there's more floodplain up there that you are eventually planning to build on. Down in the southern area, I think, there's not that much that, that the building is encroaching into the existing floodplain now, but it looks as if up that...
That northern edge, and again, it's, it's, uh, we're, we're meeting the connections that were pre-planned with the roadway, yes, ma'am?
So that would be a small area with deep fill, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Alma, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, does FEMA sign off on the actual plans, or do they sign off on the, the, after the excavation is done, do they come and do the, check everything out, and then they give approval before anything else is, the next steps are taken? When does FEMA actually say, "This is okay for you all to build and do what you want to do, and we be safe"?
So, the way that our process works along with FEMA's process is that before a site plan can be approved, FEMA actually has to grant a conditional letter of map provision. The applicant has to go in and do the cut and fill, actually do the work, get their final letter of map provision from FEMA. Then they actually go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to have the floodway fringe overlay zoning district reinterpreted to, um, the actual new, um, floodplain line based on the work that they had done as granted by FEMA and that final letter of map provision. And once the Board of Zoning Appeals has amended the floodway fringe overlay line, then they can submit a site plan, but that's because our overlay zoning district doesn't allow for any new lots to be created within the floodway fringe overlay, so it has to go through that process before they can even get to a site plan.
Thanks.
Michael?
You mentioned that you're cutting out, uh, twenty percent more volume than you're building. Is that correct?
Uh, we're, yeah, um, Michael, we're cutting it, we're adding twenty percent additional storage than the available storage that's there currently.
Are you, are you taking credit on that additional storage for the volume of the wetland?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so it's just above the permanent pool?
This is above and beyond, correct.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Movement to standard. It's not my night.
Fences again.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, let's talk fences. You want to vote, who think it would have been the motion, I guess, something?
Okay, you want to have a amendment to the main motion about garage doors?
I'm in the motion to read. Uh, the applicant is requesting a mo, well, the applicant shall be allowed to permit garage doors. Uh, I'm just, I'm gonna do it.
Let me say, do what the staff has said, because I want to say something about the...
Okay. Move, move, to move modification standard as written by staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved in second, discussion, Ms. Peterson?
The, the reason I say that is because, as some of you heard me say already, I went out and measured our garage doors today. Uh, the maximum width of eighteen feet may not allow you to put two vehicles in there at the same, to, to put the second one in once you have the first one in. So, I th, I like better what our, what the staff has.
So, leave it as written?
Yes, yes, that's, that's the reason I suggested that.
All right, any other comments? So, uh, we're voting on the amendment to the main motion relative to garage doors and not fences. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, the eyes have it, we're back to the main motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, the eyes have it. Item twenty-three, is that right? I tread lightly tonight. Downs Boulevard Property Subdivision Site Plan and Lots Sixteen and Seventeen, one non-residential structure on one point eight five acres located at four hundred and four eighteen Downs Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval with condition, um, and I would note that it's our understanding that the applicant, uh, is appealing the city's requirement for a sidewalk along the Figures Drive frontage, and would prefer to pay a fee in lieu, uh, of installing that sidewalk. Uh, staff recommends that the sidewalk be installed. Uh, if you determine that a fee in lieu of sidewalk installation is appropriate in this situation, uh, then staff would recommend that the Figures Drive frontage still be graded in a manner that will allow a sidewalk to be installed at some point in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone in, anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item, other than the applicant?
Chairman, this is Brian, I'm Brian Echols, representing the Heritage Foundation. And I'm speaking as a, on behalf of the public tonight, not on behalf of the applicant. I've asked Mr. Cyril Stewart, who's the president of the board of the Heritage Foundation, to provide some photos that I like to reference in my brief remarks here. We are basically speaking on behalf of this project and the applicant. I think you know that the applicant is taking part in a great battlefield preservation project to relocate what is currently on Columbia Avenue to this location. And that's why the interest of the Heritage Foundation, Franklin's Charge, is so keen. We understand that the applicant has requested to pay fees in lieu, and we have done our own investigation and due diligence, and we believe that the right-of-way here is not suitable for a sidewalk, nor is the future extension of that sidewalk suitable. I've given you these pictures to illuminate the things that we saw in our review. First, if you look at picture number two, you see that the site adjacent to the right-of-way, as shown in the site plan, is adjacent to a tree preservation area. And it crowds into that area, and you also see that there's a fairly significant slope in that area. If you look at pictures four and six, however, you'll see another thing, both looking to the north and to the south on Figures Road. You'll see that the site to the north is completely treed, much farther than even the instant property. And the extension of this sidewalk in the future into that area would result in even more tree removal and is unnecessary. The right-of-way in which this sidewalk is proposed has significant slope. Not only would it impact the tree protection area, it would likely require a retention wall or some other structure to take that slope into account. Looking at picture five, however, you'll see the other side of the street. This is going north, and you'll see that the right-of-way is relatively flat and open. More importantly, if you look at photo seven, you'll see that the other side, the opposite right-of-way, runs all the way to the elementary school property. The future sidewalk between the school and Downs Boulevard will be functional and topographically superior and functionally, functionally avoid the adverse effects on this site plan. The developer is not requesting that he be relieved of the obligation to finance this sidewalk. It's not a matter of money, it's a matter of function and aesthetics, and we rise in support of that request.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
Chairman Jill Wayes, Van Hessen, Eppson Associates, and we represent the developer. I won't go through all that again, but the developer does ask pay fees in lieu of, because of the slopes and the existing conditions out there, and feels like payment would be better served than trying to build this sidewalk in a place where it's basically unusable. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question? Fees in lieu of guaranteed sidewalk will be built, whether it's on this side of the street or the other, or we can put in and make a look at it?
I believe it goes into a pool of money to be used for future sidewalks.
Okay, got a problem. I used to represent this neighborhood and live in this neighborhood, and there, I'm telling you, there's a lack of sidewalks. And what will happen is, it'll go in that fund, it'll never be built. I can almost guarantee you. So I don't have a problem, and everything that was said from this podium was right, but it'll never happen. So to be honest with you, and this is going to sound, for people who love trees, and I do too, it's going to say, I'd rather for them to tear out ten trees and put the sidewalk in than not. They will never be built in this neighborhood. They're not. People take their lives in their own hands to walk. So I will tell you now, I am not at all in favor of that, putting it in that pool and the next time the cool springs is, the sidewalk is built. I'm just, I feel very strongly about that. So I'm just saying, there are no guarantees, and I know that. So I just want to, so I have a problem with that.
Well, let me clarify, if you vote in approval of the motion, it, the sidewalk will go in.
Well, I'm just saying, okay, I know, I'm speaking to, amendment hasn't been made, but just have me kind of, just, because that's coming, but anyway.
All right.
Question?
Yes.
Whenever the money is put in, it's not just put in the all-purpose sidewalk fund, right? It's put in the fund for this particular area?
It's all-purpose.
Oh, so what about the people who have already built out there and put in?
Doesn't matter.
In lieu of, their money's already gone?
Been used somewhere else.
Been used somewhere else.
Oh, that's interesting.
Until what time? It's putting that fund into that fund until what time? I mean, at what point would you go the sidewalk?
And Alderman Peterson, we really don't know when that might happen. That has to do with schedules for the Streets Department, the project priority, a number of different items that they may be considering.
So it doesn't have, it doesn't have to do with how many lots are developed? You're not waiting for a certain number of lots to be developed to connect sidewalks? And I think you do that?
I mean, obviously, if there's a possibility of connecting sidewalks, that might be one of the things they looked at, but that is not something that I'm aware of.
Mr. Chairman, I need a little more clarification.
Please.
Is the applicant wanting to pay the fee in lieu of for the Dallas, for the Downs Boulevard side? Or for the Figures side?
Figures.
Figures.
So is applicant going to build a sidewalk on the Downs side?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then elect not to build a sidewalk and pay the fee because of the slope and the trees?
That's correct.
And Brian, you want to comment? I need a little more clarification on what y'all want, or what you're asking for. Do you want the sidewalk? Or do you not want the sidewalk? And do you want it on? Well, I mean, do you want it on, in this area, in this site plan that says this aerial here, I see number four, and then I see number three across the street, which is flatter, obviously, makes more sense put across the street. But I'm trying to understand who wants what.
Commissioner Franks, I believe that the request of the applicant is to not install the sidewalk and pay fees in lieu of...
On one side only?
And the public comment was to, yeah, just on Figures. The public comment was, from Mr. Echols, was to support that request.
Everybody getting along here?
So I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to decide what is the appropriate direction for this site, whether to install that sidewalk or not.
How many feet is this, Figures? Do you know how many feet that is roughly? I mean, it's, I wouldn't see, I wouldn't see a problem with it not being there. I'd rather have, I'm like the opposite, I'd rather have the trees.
And I'd rather have the walk.
I think the walk would do better on the other side of the street.
I think the walk can go in on those sides.
One at a time, please, I'm sorry.
May I amend my motion?
Please.
Because they're not going to walk from business to the school.
I'd like to amend my motion to approval with the applicant, approval for the applicant to pay fees in lieu of sidewalk.
Second.
Okay.
When I was, if I could...
Hold on one second. So moved and seconded to revise the original motion to accept the site, the project, with fees in lieu of for the sidewalk?
Do you amend that?
Yes. I'm in my main motion.
You can do that, or you can rescind your original and then make your, however, this will take two votes.
Yeah, I was going to say, this will be an amendment.
Why don't I just...
It can be an amendment.
He's already done it, and I said, "Okay".
Okay, here it is, all right.
So are we not going to build walks at all then?
Well, we hadn't voted on that.
The motion is for fees in lieu of installing that sidewalk on Figures Avenue. Okay.
Is the board mind finally? When I was on the board of Mayor and Alderman, this was a bone of contention for years, and years and years. Oldest part of Franklin, now I sidewalks. And so the question was brought before us over and over again, what do we plan to do about it? And in part, it was, you know, whereas new, as people build new buildings, we'll do that. With this option, it's not going to happen. And I know what you're saying, well, people won't use, well, they don't use it because they're not there. But people do, people walk up and down Downs Boulevard. People walk up and down Figures. This neighborhood was one of the ones, and we'd go through, and they'd say, "Well, you know, if you want a property owner to donate, donate land, and da-da-da-da-da", the thing is, with this type of option, and it'll be exercised over and over again, there will never be sidewalks built in this neighborhood, because it goes into that fund until budget time comes and somebody decides, "Well, who is going to say, 'Let's spend money and put sidewalks into an existing neighborhood'?" Not only existing, an old neighborhood. It just won't happen. So my point is, I'd rather see a sidewalk that's not in the optimum location than see no sidewalk at all. A sidewalk alone downs that leads nowhere. That, that's mine. And I just, I really, I really don't support that. And this is probably something that's flown under the radar, and I guarantee you, the folks in Perkins Drive and Figures Drive and all that knew that, they'd be right here yelling the same thing. This one, years and years ago, and nothing's changed. There's been a new sidewalk built in this area when we were, since we were discussing it back in the nineties. So that's my frustration with it. It just is.
All right, any other comments? So we have...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Can I ask just something very quickly before you take a vote? There's another issue. The engineering comment, which, or the condition, which is condition number two, is sort of in two parts, and I do, we do need to clarify with the applicant on this particular one. So what the condition is, is that if you elect not, if you elect to collect the fee in lieu as opposed to requiring the sidewalk, engineering is still going to require that the site be graded appropriately for a sidewalk. And we do need to clarify with the applicant whether they are also appealing that part of this condition as well, because I did not hear them speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are appealing that part of it also.
All right. Okay, so the motion still exists. Go ahead, please.
If they're going to grade the site, does that affect the current trees and the slope off of Figures?
Yep, that's why he brought that up, yeah. To make sure they understood that.
That's why we're appealing the grading of that also. We want to leave the trees in place because of the steep slope right there. The developer will build the sidewalk on Downs Boulevard. The one we're appealing and asking to pay fees in lieu of is down Figures.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Marsha, you want to say something?
Hold on for one second, just one second.
In the meantime, I have a comment, please.
Okay.
I would like to rescind my motion and make a new motion that we allow the applicant to pay fees in lieu of building the sidewalk and to adjust the grading plan therefore after.
All right. Alma, will you rescind your second?
I would rescind my second.
What'd you say, it's the second part of that?
So they will, they will be able to not, they'll be able to adjust their grading plan to leave the trees in position. Right.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Did I understand the main motion? It's kind of gone back and forth.
I do want to say one thing. The, there is a sidewalk partly over there that's along the school side, and it's on the other side.
It's on the school side?
Yeah.
Is there any way for the commission to earmark that money?
Nope.
No? Okay. That was easy.
Well, some of us can remember that money.
Okay.
Can you work on any?
All right, there is a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes.
Now you have to take the full motion.
I'm sorry?
That was the amendment.
I thought he rescinded all his...
You rescinded your amendment.
I rescinded my motion.
He rescinded, he rescinded the motion.
Wait, you didn't, you didn't say a motion to approve with that. That was just rescinding your amendment. Now you've got to take the full motion.
So what we've approved is the grading below the tree line where it doesn't affect trees and slope?
And the fees in lieu.
And the fee.
Fees in lieu.
So you still have to take the motion as amended? Which was first motion by you, second by Alderman.
Okay, all right, so the main motion, as amended, is out there. And we're now back to the main motion. All, any other discussion on the main motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I believe, is this item twenty-four now? Item twenty-four, Downs Boulevard Properties Subdivision Final Plaid Revision Ten, Lots Sixteen and Seventeen, consolidation of two non-residential lots on 1.85 acres.
Mr. Chairman, staff would recommend approval. Both of the, both of the conditions become void due to the, due to the previous vote.
Okay. All right, anyone in the audience, other than the applicant, want to speak to this item? Someone representing the applicant?
We just asked for approval of the final plan.
Okay, all right. So when we make the motion, we need to include your comments about the two items that no longer are conditions? All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hold on, make sure the motion includes the deletion of the two comments from engineering. Good.
Seconding the motion as amended.
All right, thank you. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That "no" gets louder every time.
You're getting a little hyped every time, a little more hype.
All right, let's move to item twenty-five. I'm sorry. Item twenty-nine. Ordinance 2013 dash twenty-eight, to be entitled ordinance to amend Chapter Five, Section 5.3.7, 5.3.8, and 5.3.9 of the City of Franklin zoning ordinance. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this zoning ordinance revision would move the requirements for hamlets, conservation subdivisions, and traditional neighborhood development out of the ordinance and into their own booklet, which hopefully you've received a copy of, where they would take the form of design guidelines. To our knowledge, these sections have not been employed by any applicants, and we are not aware of any upcoming projects in which applicants would employ these specific requirements. Staff recommends that you send this revision forward to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Anyone in the audience that has a passion about hamlets, traditional neighborhood developments or conservation developments? Who wants to speak to that? All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? I would like to just ask the question about, I know that theoretically, nobody is taking advantage of this. If, and at this point, it's voluntary. So it's, it's a request, that could still happen. Is there, does this, taking this out of the ordinance, does this discourage those items, those potential development patterns?
I hope not. I hope it actually encourages, and I would tell you why. Right now, it's sort of a total buy-in situation. So if you want to do a T and D, and you want to invoke our ordinance, you're buying into that entire section and following the entire thing. Once they become more guidelines than requirements, it could be, you know, some potential developments could incorporate many of those standards, but may not have this physical space, or may not have any number of things. And so by making guidelines, we can continue to allow applicants to incorporate those, but it's not so much of an all-or-nothing kind of thing anymore.
Okay. And the issue of connectivity that sometimes is a concern with, sort of, lack of a better term, cul-de-sac communities, that's being addressed through our connectivity indexes and as such. And if there are land use plans that refer to traditional neighborhood developments or other things, that doesn't change, that, that doesn't require an amendment to the land use plan because we're pulling that out of the ordinance. Okay. All right, thank you for answering that. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, I believe we are now going to talk about fences.
We are talking about the other subject, right.
The other things.
And as you've been aware, as we've seen this evening, and we've seen for several of the last times that we've gotten together, is that we get a lot of requests for modifications of standards in order to allow for wider doors, both on the side and rear of properties. Right now, the ordinance requires two nine-foot doors, or separated by two feet. Staff is recommending that for side and rear not-facing streets, that we allow a maximum eighteen-foot door. that we allow a maximum 18-foot door. And again, street-facing garages would still have to abide by the requirement of two nine-foot doors. So staff's recommendation is that we, that you ask for approval of this for an 18-foot wide door. I know we did have some discussion on that, and, you know, we certainly are trying to stay with the intent. If the letter changes, that's not a big deal. We just want to make sure that the developers aren't coming back with MOSs because they simply can't get the cars into the garages the way it's configured.
All right, got you, okay. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? I see none, so is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
And now, the maximum of 18 feet, you know, is, I think we're taking care of things that don't face the front, you know, and we've done that. I have a concern, though, about saying a maximum of 18 feet, because we were just talking, I'm not sure with an 18-foot door, you necessarily could get a second vehicle in there. And once you have one of them parked in already. There might be, especially, there might be some that have larger vehicles where they would need more than that.
That and the way it's worded, we're allowing anything up to 18 feet.
Up to.
Which means you could market a two-car garage, but technically, the door wouldn't be wide enough to get two cars in. It could be 14 or 16.
That's true.
So there's some, we need to decide on exactly what we're going to allow and what we plan on going in it. Now, is it, is 18 feet going to be the width, period? Instead of up to 18 feet?
Or do the, shall it exceed 9 feet?
Yeah, you know, and I don't know, as I say, all I know is my garage, we've got two nine-feet doors there. But.
I'll say from my experience, it's common to have for smaller homes, 16-foot is not an uncommon size.
But how can you, I mean.
Hold on one second, let me say. And it's fairly typical, what we're, new houses that we're doing now are 18 feet wide. And that easily fits two cars. Now, it's, the depth is sometimes an issue, but in terms of the width, an 18-foot door works fine.
Are those on rear load and side loads, or just front loads?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Alley-loaded, side-load.
But not front-loaded?
Yeah, it's not, it's not common to have a 20-foot or larger, single-car garage door.
Right.
So let's say, shall be 18 feet in width, instead of saying up to 18 feet?
Yes, so it is 18.
Okay.
So they're required to build, yeah.
You mean, the maximum width shall be 18 feet? Will allow an 18-foot door. It's what it's saying, it's saying you can build up to an 18-foot door. And if I want to put an 18-foot door in, then I need about 20 or 21-foot in width for that 18-foot door.
Inside the garage.
Inside the garage. So that's good, that allows someone to have that extra door, larger than standard. Standard is 16-foot. And, but I think what we ought to be focusing on is the minimum number versus the maximum, because if we don't put a minimum on it, then someone could have, someone could circumvent that 18-foot and go back, drop it down to a 12-foot and not have room for two cars.
Yeah, that's what we were just.
That's kind of what we were talking about.
I would like to add.
We need to add something else.
It needs to be, they either need to provide two nine-foot doors, or up to an 18-foot.
Right.
Or an 18-foot.
You just need to make the provision that if they did want to do multiple nine-foot garage doors with a separation between them, that that's allowable as well. Okay, that's a good point.
But you've got to remember that every space has to have a 10 by 20. That's also a part of our zoning laws, that's not changing.
Well, I guess I'm wrong about that, because maybe you can have a nine-foot door in an 18-foot opening, and it'd just be one car. I guess it depends on if it's a one-car home, or a two-car home, or three cars, so.
Well, now, all power detached dwelling units have to have two spaces, right? Yeah. But if you look, and I read that somewhere, but I don't see it in here, that you have to have two, what did you call it, the 200 square feet?
You do have to have 200 square feet, 20 by 10, in the interior.
On the interior, that's right.
So the way it's written is, in my opinion, accurate.
But what we're saying is, I don't know if you can get this.
It doesn't say they have to build an 18, they just can't exceed 18.
Up to maximum 18. And what we're saying, we don't want anything taller than an 18.
We don't want anything.
I don't care how.
But nothing less than.
I don't know that I care how wide it is. I don't want it to be so narrow that you can't get two cars.
That's right.
But if I want to build, but one-car garage homes are allowable under the.
So then that'd be one nine-foot door?
That'd be one nine-foot.
Well, it could be an 18-foot garage, but with one nine-foot door. But the minimum is 20 by 10.
We're talking about the doors, though, aren't we?
Some of the doors.
We're talking about the doors.
The way it's written is accurate.
You're not required, if you wanted to do a one-car garage, you're required to have two cars to park on that pad, but they don't, both have to be in the garage.
That's correct.
So you could have a 12-foot wide door that's just for one car.
Yes, you could.
All we're saying is, you can't build over 18-foot a door.
We're not saying you can build less than 18-foot on the side.
You can build less, but you can't build.
May not be sufficient for two cars.
Putting a maximum, it doesn't make sense to me. I would want to put a minimum, so that they at least have to build something large enough to pull two cars.
Well, the minimum is 20 by 10.
No, that's the square foot of the garage.
That's once you get inside.
It's only just a door.
It's interior space.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So you could put a golf cart and roll-up garage door on a minimum, single-car garage.
Yeah, you could put a 200-square garage with a 10-foot door.
So what we're saying. What does our zoning ordinance say about that, though? Because I thought I had just read that it had to be, what?
But the problem is, in new, obviously, the covenant restrictions are going to, are going to require a minimum one-car garage, or a minimum two-car, or one-car. I see what you're saying.
I think it should be struck and say, shall be 18 feet.
That what?
So do you still have the option? Okay, so this is what, I think what I'm hearing. We want people to have the option to do the nine-foot door with the two feet. But if someone wants to do the 18-foot, they could, correct?
A maximum, to a maximum of 18 feet.
On side or rear.
On the side or rear.
That's where it's accurately written.
Yeah, I think it may be dangerous to put a minimum. We haven't had an issue with minimums. I'm sure that markets going to drive, a two-car garage is going to be at least 16 feet.
You know, like inside a garage.
A home builder would build it less than 16 feet, right?
If you're going to put a minimum, then probably no less than eight foot. They allow, because you want the house to have a garage.
I think the intent is that since it is not facing a street, that basically, staff is saying that we don't necessarily want to dictate what the size should be. And if the owner wants to put in a one-car garage that's 11 feet wide, then they can, because it's not visible from the street. So that's kind of the intent of where we're getting at. Staff does want to keep that flexibility if possible. That's where our recommendation's coming from.
And that's fine if it's one car. If you have that side garage, it's two cars, where I have a problem.
Yeah, and as we indicated, what this group has said, and what we also brought us to the design professionals, and the design professionals did indicate that most two-car garage doors are between 16 and 18 feet. So that, so we were trying to get close to the standard.